According to national statistics, one in every three American homes is affected by substance use disorder and only one of every 10 persons who needs treatment receives treatment. You might not know it, but someone you know or care about could be suffering in silence. Offering your hand of support can be crucial to getting that person connected to care and recovery. To learn more or to get help, come see me. I'm Mireneal O'Leary. I'm here to help, and so is the city of Waterbury.
Good evening, everyone, to this Waterbury Board of Education workshop meeting for Thursday, June 3, 2021. This is a special meeting. When I say special, we're doing it virtually via Zoom technology, and it's good to see everybody here tonight. Our first agenda item is silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything that you want to say while we go into this?
No, Commissioner, not today.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone. We'll go into silent prayer. In honor of the Red Sox winning today, Commissioner Orso, would you kindly lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. My pledge of allegiance...
To the flag...
...of the United States of America...
And to the Republic...
...which stands one nation...
Under God...
Indivisible...
With liberty and justice...
And justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Orso.
My pleasure, sir.
Our next agenda item is public speaking. I've been informed that we do not have any callers in. Is that a confirmation, Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item will be Commissioner Sweeney.
Okay, Commissioner Sweeney, you have the first item, and you have the floor.
I move to add item 8A, amendment to contract with Cooperative Education Services for Students with Disabilities to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments? Please signify if you're in agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Commissioner Sweeney.
I move to add item 8B, Contract with Connecticut Institute for the Blind for Students with Disabilities to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Comments? Please signify if you're in agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We're going on to, what, item number two now, Carrie? Okay. Item two, Early Childhood Report. Maureen Bergen, Ms. Hanks, Mary Sue Hanks, and Mr. Darren Schwartz. I'm not sure who's going to have the floor, but you guys can wrestle for it.
I'll start it off. Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Board of Education, Commissioners, and of course Superintendent Ruffin. Before you tonight is an early childhood report based on focusing on the kindergarten entrance inventory. Mary Sue and Maureen are ready and prepared to provide this report to you. Today, you'll see what many of us have assumed to be true, which is the effects of the pandemic from March all the way through the beginning of this year, and what kind of impact that may have had on students readiness for kindergarten, and what in the report on some of the mitigation strategies we put in place to support this. And this was spawned from a report that we received a few months ago at the School Readiness Council. And so without further ado, I'll let Mary Sue and Maureen take it away, and we'll be available for questions after the report.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The kindergarten inventory, or as we refer to it as the key, was designed to provide a snapshot of the skills students demonstrate based on teacher observations at the beginning of kindergarten year. The indicators were developed from the Connecticut preschool curriculum framework and the state curriculum standards for language and math. Interestingly enough, we no longer use those measures. We are now using the Early Learning and Development indicators, also known as the ELDs. It was mandated during the 2007-2008 legislative session. So based on that, the Department of Education came up with this assessment for them. It is not standardized. It did not come out from the Office of Early Childhood, but it does give us a baseline level of achievement to be compared to the same learners at the end of third grade. So that's an important distinction. The purpose of this was to measure progress for children at the beginning of kindergarten and compare their successes to their progress at the end of third grade. We're now using the ELDs, and they came out in 2014. It has not been calibrated, so I'll leave that.
And what this means for children in the community, we have various school readiness sites. There are 1,328 school readiness spaces in our city. And as you know, there are more than that kindergarten entries. So our children in the community sites, those programs are using a variety of curriculum resources. So what we're looking at is, again, as Maureen said, everyone is using our standards, are the Connecticut ELDs, the Early Learning Development Standards. And these school readiness programs, their curriculums are aligned to those ELDs. Mary Sue, do you want to pull the slideshow back up? Oh, no, someone, nope, mine is showing it. Are you guys not seeing it?
No, we're not seeing it.
On the bottom, you have to click Share Your Screen.
I already did that. I will do it again.
Try this again and try it one more time.
Yep. There you go. Yeah. And, sorry about that. Okay, we're back. You can see this?
Okay. Yes. Okay, so the kindergarten test comes out in the beginning in October. It's held over a two-week period of time, and then the results are all sent to the district house in March. That's important because the district gets it in March. However, the kindergarten teachers can see how their students are performing almost immediately. So they can use the information garnered from that KEI to inform their instruction throughout the school year.
Yes, they also, at the time this kindergarten inventory is administered, teachers have given a variety of beginning-of-the-year assessments, so they have more than this one point of reference. The kindergarten entrance inventory also looks at fine and gross motor skills. It looks at creativity, and it looks at social-emotional skills. So those three pieces are not typically assessed in a public school setting, and that's because the alignment goes back into preschool where there is plenty of focus on those areas. So when teachers have given the KEI, they're able to really get a very holistic picture of a child. So if they know that they're struggling in one domain of development, they can use that domain to bolster another. But it's really a pretty comprehensive picture of where students are at the beginning of kindergarten.
Mary Sue, can you go to the next slide, please? So these are the domains that are assessed. There's seven points, up to seven points of data for each one. In the language data, in the language area, there's seven. The literacy has six, so on and so forth. So what we did was we pulled data from the ones that we see as being very impactful for kindergartners, and that would be the language literacy and the numeracy skills. Personal social, the children tend to do pretty well in, and even during the pandemic year, they did very well.
Just to make a connection for the board, Maureen and Mary Sue keep referring to the ELDs, and so if you're not familiar with what that is, they basically have eight domains, but that's the standards now we use for preschool. And so this kindergarten inventory hasn't been really updated and is really based on former standards. Almost similar like us going to the Common Core but taking the CMT still. And so it hasn't, the population really hasn't caught up to the practice, and so it's something for us to maybe look at as we talk to our legislators in the future. But I wanted to try to clarify that in case it wasn't completely clear, so thank you.
Thank you. You're absolutely right, and I appreciate you bringing that to light again. All right, next slide. So this is the scoring rubric, which really isn't a rubric, but this is what teachers are asked to look at when they're assessing the child. And basically, what they're doing is they're reflecting on each student in their classroom as to what level they would be at. If they were assessing their language level, their language level would include participates in conversations. So that teacher needs to decide, are they emerging? Do they participate in conversation inconsistently? Or are they a Level 3, which is consistent? And then it would do the same thing for literacy and for all the other areas. Mary Sue and I actually had a meeting with Abe Christ up at the OEC, who brought in, to our surprise, Ajit Gopala Krishnan, who is the Chief Performance Officer for the State of Connecticut. And he reminded us that this came out 14 years ago. It hasn't been updated, as Darren said, and that the purpose of this was just to really identify growth from kindergarten through third grade, not an evaluation of how successful the children were in kindergarten. So that's an important tool. Doesn't mean we can't take information away from this and try to improve our programs both in preschool and kindergarten. It's just a snapshot look. And this is our data stretched from 2014 to 2021. So the 2021 data clearly has, you can see the pandemic effect. So just to remind you that this is specifically for literacy. Looking across time, the Level 1 are students who are going to need the most support to be successful in kindergarten. A Level 2 is going, that's the emerging, they're going to need some support. And Level 3 pretty much translates to, you know, with the curriculum, they'll make their progress. So we look across the data here, and the temptation is to look right to Level 3 and say, wow, you know, why aren't there more children at Level 3? So looking at that and then checking back into Level 2. So part of our conversation with Ajit was around rubrics, because there isn't one. That's the bottom line. There is not a rubric. So teachers are rating based on what they see. So on that data point, he also mentioned things, clearly the pandemic, but also socioeconomic status, student mobility, ELL, special ed needs, and the lack of preschool experiences all contribute. We're also obviously not looking at cohort data. These are incoming kindergartners year after year, but it's really hard to compare. Like, look at one class, you know, my immediate was like, what happened in the year 2017-18? What was going on in the year 2016 for preschool students that they did so well? So, you know, data can absolutely tell a story, and we can see the pandemic effect here for sure.
And if you take a look at the data, the data is pretty consistent through the years. It goes up a few points. If you take a look at the bottom level of language, 2015 and 2016, 33.8% were at a Level 3, which is, okay. So it makes you wonder what happened that year that there was that big of a jump. But for the most part, and this is consistent with data throughout the state, and we didn't put that slide in, the data never changes. The data, whether it's Waterbury or statewide, it only bumps up or down just a few points. It's not significantly, statistically significant. And Ajit Gopala Krishnan said that was the norm. He wasn't concerned with that, and for all of the factors that Mary Sue just identified, mobility, lack of preschool in areas, ELL learners, et cetera.
So that's your language data, and here is the numeracy data. Looking at 2021, you can see obviously the drop again between 2019 and 2020. So the students in the 2021 had very little preschool experience.
There was guidance that came out from the state to all kindergarten teachers. It must, it probably went to the district, and then it was disseminated out to building principals. And their plan to assess children virtually was in place. They needed to talk to families, much of how preschool provided their assessment this year. They needed to talk with families. They asked parents to take pictures of children performing specific skills and sending it to the teachers, and that's how it was assessed. So how accurate it was, how many parents returned information, we don't really know.
So part of the recommendations moving forward based on the data, obviously, it goes without saying that, you know, gaps have increased that have existed in the past but have widened a little bit. So part of that recommendation is a direct connection between Maureen, Mary Sue, and our elementary supervisors, and of course, using some of the incoming funding and grant funding to be able to put together some bold strategies to help close those gaps, not just for our kindergartners who are going to be moving to first grade, but really for all of our students, particularly our elementary students. And so some of that information will be coming out in future presentations about how we're using strategically to help close those gaps. Developing common formative assessments for school readiness sites. That includes the community sites and Waterbury Public Schools, so that we can see improvement over time, a part of the kindergarten that's aligned, not just to the KEI, but really, we have to triangulate it between the kindergarten entrance inventory, which is based on older standards, and align that with the newer standards that we're really judging ourselves on, which is the ELDs, Early Learning Developmental Standards. One thing that you've heard Mary Sue and Maureen discuss was this is teacher-driven and teacher observation, and therefore, anytime you have that, you have a level of subjectivity. And so going back and going back to not just our training for our teachers on professional learning, on delivering the KEI, but also making sure that we're following best protocols when it comes to observations, because sometimes even just being in a position for a certain amount of years can lead to possible biases that you're not aware of as you're doing observational data. So we think going back and providing more robust training with that. And then I think the big piece here is too, is how are we connecting this to our DIBELS and the Speed Dial 4 assessment, which are other assessments that we give at the early grades to get a more complete picture of the child and of the student, and not solely looking at one piece of data and making a lot of assumptions just based on that. And so, you know, I think there's a few things there that we can certainly start, we can start working now, obviously, for the 21-22 school year. Certainly, you could see that there was the gaps there that do exist as a result, because the data has been consistently, you know, consistent over the last few years. Some ticks up, some areas some ticks down, but obviously, this is why the gap, and we do the best we can to not just close it, but close the gap that existed prior to the pandemic. Was there anything else that you wanted to add, Maureen or Mary Sue, to the end there?
No. Well, just from my point of view, and when we do professional development for the pre-K staff, I think that this is really important for pre-K to know. So I'm going to review this with them, just so that they have an idea of what the students really are going to be tested on once they leave pre-K. It would almost make sense to do a KEI pre-test and then post-test, but that's not the way it's done in Connecticut, and then you would really see growth. We do the speed dial, and we do pre- and post-testing, so that's how we assess our students. But I will make sure that the pre-K staff are aware of the KEI. I don't believe they are.
And just to add one more piece there, is that historically, and I know the Chief Performance Officer says this isn't a, you know, specific assessment that would allow us to make broad judgments about programs historically, and I think Liz, you're aware of this, as being part of some of the councils that we've served on, is historically, students coming out of the Waterbury Public Schools tend to score higher on the KEI preschool programs versus our sites. And I know we'll be looking at that data as more of it comes in, and part of Mary Sue's role as the school readiness coordinator will be to look at that data to ensure if there are sites that aren't, students are coming out of sites and they're scoring really low on the KEI, that's one of the things that she'll be discussing with them as she go out to the community sites and does her observations.
Is it time for questions, ladies? Are you all wrapped up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This lady sure done her stuff.
Thank you, Darren Weena. Commissioner Liz Brown, I see your hand waving, then Tom Van Stone, you'll be following up.
Maureen and Mary Sue, thank you very much for the presentation. I just had a couple of questions and then observations. What are the demographics of our school readiness population at this point?
I don't have those numbers here, but I can tell you from the registrations that come in, and certainly including my birth-to-three population, that we have the highest percentage of Hispanic children, white Hispanic are the highest percentage in our district.
Great. I would appreciate that data, because I think it's telling. And the other question I had was, I did see the Dr. Martinez's evaluation report that he, that Bridge to Success did. So I had a question, and for the board, this was an analysis of the data done by Dr. Martinez on behalf of Bridge to Success and the School Readiness Council that Darren alluded to, and I did see it. I was a little concerned about, you know, it said 56 or 58% of the students attending kindergarten did not have preschool, they were of Hispanic, you know, ethnicity. That really is scary to me. And I think we have to look at an opportunity with the ARPA money, an S or 2 money, to see if we could look at where those preschool deserts are. They look like they're in the South End when I looked at the map. But I think we have to look at transportation, we have to look at access, because as Darren said, the kids who do have a preschool experience seem to be doing better going into kindergarten. So kudos to the program. But the more kids that we can get access to, so that we have too many students, I think it's almost 400 students coming to preschool, I mean, to kindergarten with no preschool experience. So I would really welcome kind of out-of-the-box thinking as we reimagine preschool, that we really look at how we can expand opportunities, especially in the ZIP codes that seem to be lacking. And I really think we, I think we really have to also look and say, okay, are we culturally competent? Are we really meeting the needs of the Hispanic population, Latino population in Waterbury? Because I don't, I just think we have to really figure that out, because we have too many kids who are not participating. So, and I don't know if you know the barriers, are the barriers transportation? I mean, I would really, I think we need to dig a lot deeper and find out, you know, what we can do to enhance our program. Obviously, the program is working. The kids who are coming are getting great programming, but I think we have too many kids coming to school without that opportunity. And I think with the S or dollars, and I would ask Dr. Ruffin to kind of help look at that, to see if there isn't a way to expand these opportunities for these kids. Because we have the data now, we know it's the Hispanic population, we know it's the South End, and there are some other weak spots in the...
Recording in progress.
Thank you so much for the information, and I think it gives us a springboard, so we can really, you know, strengthen our program as we move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Nice presentation, all this data. You know, I looked at it closely. I have some concerns there, which I'll go into, but I do want to compliment, especially the last slide being recommendations, that we really don't see that enough in our presentations. So telling us your recommendations is very important. So thank you very much for that final slide. The reasons I have some concerns here is that, you know, as the Chair of Curriculum, no rubrics. I'm not sure where this curriculum actually comes from. I didn't really catch that. I just heard some negative, not negative, but comments that it's not, you know, certified or whatever the adjective was there. And it just concerned me. I think, Mr. Swart and Dr. Ruffin, I think I need a deeper dive on this and have it brought to the Curriculum Committee. I don't recall on my tenure us reviewing pre-K curriculum. So we may not even have a board-approved curriculum package. I think we need to take a look at that in the near future, because this is very concerning in some of the areas, you know. I thought we really got away from teachers' opinions on a way to create our data. I'm a little surprised that we still have, at least there's one out there. I hope there's no others. And then as far as, so those were all comments. Now, on the charts, the bar charts, I've asked this before, and I really think it's unfair, especially if we're reporting this to the state, that we do put English-language learners into our data. We heard this a couple of years ago when we were doing some testing, and I'm not sure how much of an effect it has here, but it's going to have an effect. It would be great if somehow the data got split out, you know, to measure the population that is not in ELL. You know, it really bothers me all the time when I hear, and I know it's a data you have, but it bothers me when I hear that we put students in our metrics that are new to the country in many cases, and just have that barrier of language, like Commissioner Brown was mentioning. So it'd be interesting to see if we could remove ELL from these charts, just to see what the, because I think it's the majority of the population and students, and what those numbers come out to be. So no real questions other than, when can we maybe take a deeper dive and really be able to have board-approved curriculum? I think that will help also going forward. So those are my comments. But overall, this is an excellent presentation. Gave me a lot of info. I'm questioning somebody info, which is fine, better than not knowing it. So the presentation is on the money, telling us about the domains that are measured, et cetera. And that was even a category thing. Mr. Swart said some people have eight domains, and we have six. So, you know, I'm a little concerned... So, uh, you know, I'm a little concerned on this curriculum package. And maybe, um, maybe a deeper dive for the curriculum committee that will lessen my concern. So, um, that's what I had to say. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, we could talk about it more, uh, so that my committee can take a look at it. But, uh, uh, great information. And again, I want to really compliment you on that recommendations. Uh, and I think that needs to become a, uh, more normal process in, in the presentations board receives. So, uh, thank you very much for the presentation and I, I would love to be able to talk on this more, uh, at the committee level. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. I see Commissioner Melissa Serrano Adorno's hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Pagano. Um, to just to piggyback a little bit about what Commissioner Brown had mentioned. Uh, it is a little, you know, concerning. Am I shocked, uh, that the Hispanic community? Probably not. I think one of the biggest components to really look at is the language barriers. Um, you know, and I think that really depending on our stakeholders, our Hispanic community, um, like Madre Latina, Hispanic Coalition. We need to do more outreach to try to figure out why, um, and, and obviously have it in a Spanish English setting. It, I, I think that could also be a big component besides, you know, possibly transportation. Um, I personally myself, you know, I didn't go to, to preschool. All my children did because I knew the importance of them starting young. It did give them an advantage, um, by the time they went into kindergarten. So I definitely would do a bigger, you know, I like that you guys are, you know, you do have a, a plan in your recommendations for the future. But I would definitely utilize, um, our community stakeholders as, uh, other resources to try to do reach outs. Um, you know, the Spanish newspaper, whatever, you know, or local churches, whatever that it may possibly take to cry, you know, really ask the questions, why? Um, and, and try to get to the bottom of that, especially if it's going to hinder their performance in kindergarten. Um, and I'm, I'd imagine if they're not even up to par, if they're great, or if they're, um, i- if their data by the time they're in kindergarten, do they have to be, you know, um, retained because of that? So that's, you know, other information, but like, uh, Commissioner Van Stone did mention. I'm interested to see actually the difference in this for the, um, bilingual students and see if that data would have been a little bit different as I'm sure. I think the language barrier probably plays a, a big part of that. But I do, Darren, I do like the fact that you are, um, they should have been some type of a curriculum for sure. Um, so I am excited to, to look into that. Um, but thank you guys so much for the presentation. Thank you, Commissioner Pagano.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrano Adorno. Who else had a hand up from the board level? Uh, I see you waving, Darren. Hold on there, brother. Okay, Darren, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I just trying to, trying to keep all the, the questions and comments in order so I can just make sure I make, uh, response, uh, appropriately. So I just, um, a few things, I just want to make sure, uh, the board knows that, uh, pre-pandemic, we did ask for over 100 seats from the school readiness, uh, Office of Early Childhood because, uh, we were filling our seats up, uh, completely in our preschool classrooms. And so, um, it's not necessarily, um, not filling our seats. It's about capacity in the city. And so, uh, Commissioner Brown is correct about that and looking at where in the city. Uh, so which is why we're excited about opening up preschool at the International School because that's one of the zip codes that was identified in the reports. That was, um, uh, needed more preschool seats, but we're also really interested in that facility study that Dr. Ruffin has, uh, discussed with the board because I know that preschool is a part of that, um, uh, and going to be a part of that discussion. So we'll, more to come there because this really has to be about the whole district and the facility study and how, and how can we expand this? Throughout the city when we already have schools that, that, that in some cases are, um, overflowing. And so that, that's going to be an interesting, uh, study to be able to look at as we, we move forward. I do want to also just two quick comments. Um, we do, we did, uh, pass it, and it's probably because the, the pandemic. We did, uh, institute a new curriculum in preschool. So we, we, we started last year. Um, and we've instituted a new preschool curriculum, uh, that is aligned to the early learning developmental standards. This was, uh, Commissioner Beth By was, uh, really impressed by this curriculum. He was really excited by the fact that we were introducing this here in Waterbury. And so, um, um, and so we, we've, we've gone to the, uh, we've, we've started into, uh, with that curriculum. Uh, really excited about that. Great feedback from the teachers as well. And, uh, and again, this assessment is a state mandated kindergarten in entrance inventory assessment. And, and the idea between the six and the A standards, uh, what we were getting at there is that this state required assessment, um, is really testing six areas, even though the state has gone to a whole different standard. And our curriculum is addressing all different things. And so there really has to be a connection between preschool and kindergarten. Uh, but I do want to let the board know, we did pass the, um, um, preschool curriculum, uh, right before, uh, you know, pre-pandemic. So you probably haven't seen the, the reports as usual, which you would usually see and, and have that. And so I know Commissioner, uh, we've, we've passed a lot of curriculum in the past, uh, in the last few, two years. And so I just want to, uh, make sure that everyone, everyone knows we do have a up-to-date preschool curriculum and, um, and you know, it's go, it's going well. But we can certainly, uh, give some more information at a, a upcoming, uh, curriculum committee, uh, for sure on, on how that's going.
Thank you, sir. I don't see anybody else's hand waving.
I'll just take one comment.
All right.
President, uh, I just want to thank Maureen and Mary Sue because I know they did go to the Riva Aspira Center, uh, to recruit students and I, that's, uh, in, on Mill Street. You, you all know that, uh, that our Board of Education, I represent, uh, the board on their, uh, steering committee, and that was a great event. So I appreciate that outreach to the community with Tomas and Victor. And I believe you registered 10, uh, 10 students, uh, at that, at that outreach. So that's the kind of thing that, uh, I think is innovative and, uh, I'm so glad you're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Uh, Maureen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Liz. We just today, um, set up a meeting because we, Mary Sue and I have been talking. We're kind of feeling like we're in this, in a silo because of the pandemic. But I did schedule time, um, with Clive L. Charlton at the library to set up on Fridays. And we're hoping we can do it each Friday in the summer. He has play groups going on in the community. So while they're doing story hour and planning time, we will be at a table elsewhere, offering programming for everybody, Waterbury Public Schools and the community sites. So this way we can offer our families a choice. Certainly I want them in my Waterbury programs, but we know that there are some areas that we just can't reach to and there may be a community. So we have that and we're going to be reaching back out to Riva Aspire because that was so successful.
Thank you very much. Maureen and, um, Mary Sue, thank you very much. You guys did a great job. And, uh, by the judgment of the quality of the questions, and I see in everybody's eyes light up while they were listening to you. You did a good job keeping this group awake. So thank you. Our next agenda item is item number three. Uh, Mary Sue and Darren, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone, again, because you couldn't get enough, uh, this is the first time. Uh, we're going, uh, in front of you tonight, uh, for approval of the school readiness and child, uh, daycare grant. Uh, as you can see, uh, from your backup, we have, uh, multiple, uh, programs, 11 sub-grantees, uh, going for, uh, just over $10 million for 1,328 preschool spaces. Looking, uh, seeking approval tonight, uh, to move forward with this, uh, and, and, and to, to bring it to the Board of Alderman.
Thank you. Any, uh, comments or questions for Mr. Schwartz? I don't see, oh, Commissioner Tom Van Stone, the floor is.
Yeah, I just, it's just a quick one. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Uh, Darren, are you looking for us to give you a go-ahead tonight on this in a workshop?
Uh, that's a, that's a good question. Now, uh, the Board, uh, uh, of Alderman will approve based on your, uh, approval in two weeks.
Okay, that's what I wanted to check. Okay, thanks.
But, but thank you for that. And I, I might be asking that later on in the, in the board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Liz Brown, I see your hand.
Darren, is this an increase in slots or is this, uh, the same as last year?
It's the same. They, they didn't increase lots.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else going once, going twice? Thank you, uh, Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Hanks. Um, our next agenda item is number four. And, uh, side showing with Mr. Schwartz is Joe Gorman on this one. So, uh, Joe and Darren, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hello, everyone. Nice to see you. Glad everyone's doing well. Um, the, uh, item in front of you is an expansion of our present athletic trainer services contract. Uh, for the past five, six years, uh, we have been covering four high schools with three trainers. Uh, that has resulted in some coverage gaps, uh, and has created some issues. So the, uh, decision was made by, uh, Mr. Clark when he was here, uh, that we would press on and go for a fourth trainer. And the, uh, contract that you have in front of you today, uh, represents that, that we would have a full-time trainer at Crosby, Willby, Kennedy and Career. Uh, there would be no sharing. Uh, and it does expand our coverage, closes gaps, uh, and I'm hoping that you'll support it.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Any, uh, comments or questions for Joe while he's here from anyone? I don't see anybody's hand raising. So, uh, Joe and Darren, thank you very much. Our next agenda item is item number five. Um, Ms. Nizardo and Mr. Schwartz, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And, uh, I'll speak to this much more, uh, uh, in depth than I can because she has been, uh, uh, working really hard at making sure this program gets off for us. And so this is an agreement between, um, uh, Tata American International Corporation. Uh, with their Go IT program, you might remember our students, um, creating apps last year as a result of this program and the year before that. So app development program, they reimburse us completely for the program and they come and train our teachers. And so one of the things we are looking tonight is one of those thumbs up from the board, uh, to be able to get, um, some sort of consensus. Uh, and we're asking that, uh, we typically don't do that, uh, uh, for some of these programs, but we're asking that, uh, because we would like to do the training prior to the next board meeting. And so if, uh, we are seeking some sort of consensus slash thumbs up tonight to be able to move forward with this program. We, 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 we get rave reviews. We have, I think, almost, uh, how many students, Carrie? Is it almost 200?
We have 205 students priority enrolled in the program.
Really exciting. So, uh, and Carrie, uh, has led the project from the beginning. So, uh, I'm looking for your consensus tonight.
What is, what, if I may ask a question, what is a predominant language that they're doing their app development in now?
You would ask me that. Um, they, I'm actually, I'm, I'm not sure. They use MIT, um, App Inventor. Yeah.
That, that's a whole package. Gotcha. Very nice. Well.
It actually aligns with what Mike does in, uh, CTE as well. We use the MIT App Inventor as well.
Okay. Well, you're looking for thumbs?
Up or down?
Oh, these are up.
Yay. Thank you so much.
You got a lot of thumbs.
Thank you.
Carrie, great job. Darren, we're tired of listening to you.
Thank you all so much. All done.
Um, item number six. Uh, this is, um, Mr. Pabon and Elaine Skoronsky. Is that, do I have your name pronounced correctly?
Yes, yes, you do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, uh, President Pagano and Vice President Harvey, Board of Education Commissioners and Superintendent Ruffin. My name is Miguel Pabon and I am the Director of People's Services. Um, so tonight we have an item six. So we're requesting approval of a contract between the City of Waterbury and NVCC for school social work in, on human services interns. There is no cost associated with this, uh, particular agreement, and it would allow us to obtain interns from NVCC and provide them with, uh, valuable experiences, uh, for their degrees and, uh, seeking your consensus for this, um, item this evening.
Well, we're not seeking consensus, but we are, we are looking for approval next board meeting.
Okay, got you. Thank you very much. Any questions for, uh, Mr. Pabon?
No, just great job. I think it's awesome. Great.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. I think, uh, you've got the next agenda, you've got the next two agenda items. So, you know, just go at your leisure.
Yeah, I think I have the next several ones. So in, uh, and thank you. And in the next item, uh, we're requesting, uh, approval of a contract between the City of Waterbury and the Waterbury YMCA. Again, there's no cost associated with this particular contract, and it would allow us to continue providing some transition opportunities for some of our students with disabilities.
Okay, any questions for, uh, Mr. Pabon? All right. I think Mr. Rocco Orso has got his finger up.
I have no question. I just want to say I like when they say, uh, no cost.
Uh, you, you're welcome.
That's the retired purchasing director talking.
Yeah, um, those are only the first two. Unfortunately, the other ones have some costs. So.
Okay, here it comes.
It does start with, with the good ones, right?
Any other questions on item number, um, seven? All right. Item number eight is yours now.
Okay. In, uh, this item, uh, we are requesting approval of a contract between the City of Waterbury and Edvance, which is one of our regional education service centers, uh, for transition services to students with disabilities. This is a three-year contract for two students with disabilities. Uh, Edvance has a program with Post University, uh, called the University Pathways Program, which provides comprehensive transition services to help students reach their transition goals.
Thank you. Um, any questions?
I just had a question.
Okay, all right, Liz.
Uh, Miguel, is this a new program for Waterbury? I don't remember having this, um, partnership before, but maybe I just didn't remember.
I don't believe so. However, as you know, I'm still new and I'm learning a lot of pieces. I do believe that Elaine Skoronsky is on the call, and I don't know if Elaine can speak to whether or not we've had this, uh, contract in the past. Uh, Elaine, can you talk to this? I think she's muted. If, if she's not able to speak, uh, to that commissioner, can I get back to you?
Yeah, oh, sure. Yeah.
I'd love to get back to you. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question for, uh, Mr. Pabon? I believe, I believe, uh, Commissioner Anne Sweeney, is that your hand up or are you just waving?
No, no, it is. Um, I'm just, I'm looking at the price tag unfortunately on this one. Uh, $281,271, uh, for two students. So, um, is this like a full day program throughout the school year or what are we getting for that? That amount of money?
Yeah, that is my understanding. Um, again, I think I see Elaine unmuted. Elaine, can you speak to that piece? I don't know if she can hear us. She may be having some difficulty with, um, her audio.
Yeah.
Elaine, was that her?
No, I think that was me. But if we could just, uh, get some clarification on that.
Absolutely.
Board meeting when we vote on this because I'm a little concerned about that cost. And, and I see, you know, a lot of programming mentioned here. Um, but I don't know, is that a full school day length of a school day or is that, you know, separate little pockets?
No, and I agree with you that based, based on the, the, uh, price there or the cost, um, that my, um, understanding is that it is a, is a full day program, but I can get that information and verify it and confirm it before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on this item before we go on to the next two under Mr. Pabon? All right. I believe you also have items eight A and eight B that were put in motion and brought. Okay.
That's correct. Uh, the next item, uh, we're requesting approval for, for an amendment to a contract between City of Waterbury and Cooper- City of Waterbury and Cooperative Education Services, which is another regional education service center. This one is for educational services to a student with disabilities. It is also a three-year contract which will allow us to continue providing services to this student in this particular program.
Any questions for Mr. Pabon on this one? Nobody, wait, Commissioner Anne Sweeney?
Yeah, I apologize. I was not, did not have time after work to pull down the two updates on 8A and 8B. So if on both of these, if you would just give us an idea, how many students and what's the price tag?
The, let me make sure I have the right one in front of me. This particular one is for Cooperative Education Services. It's, it says to a student. So I'm, I'm assuming that that's one student and the it is a three-year contract. The amount is $263,177. And that's thousands.
Okay. Right, thank you.
And that's similar to the, the recently discussed item with the three-year contract. As, as I, I, I made it was as well.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Liz Brown, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, I know that special ed services are very tailored and they do cost a lot of money. I do understand that. But I'm, I'm curious as to why none of these are going out to bid. Is that because we, it's the only organization that is offering this service?
Sometimes it's the only organization. Sorry, Miguel.
That's good. Thank you.
Feel free. Sometimes it's, it's really based on the IP and what happens at the PPT. And so it's based when you, when you when you have those conversations at the PPT, it's what's the best fit for the student, not necessarily what's the best price. And so we do negotiate, we do work with different companies. Sometimes I guess I like to call it like a bundle. So if we have a few students going to certain places, we can negotiate prices. And so those typically don't go out to bid because special services is exempt. And I'm sure Rocco will school me on anything I'm saying right now, but, but it is based on the it is, oh, there he is. Okay. So it is based on the PPT and we do, we do our best to negotiate those prices with, with certain area of education services.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Orso, would you like to get on the train?
Yes, Individual with Disabilities Education Act is exempt from the bidding process.
Wow, nice and succinct. Nicely done. Uh, any other questions? Okay, Miguel, do you have another one that you're seeing up?
One last one.
All right.
Thank you. In this last one, item 8B, we're requesting approval of a contract between City of Waterbury and the Connecticut Institute for the Blind Doing Business as Oak Hill, which is a private educational program for students with disabilities. This is also a three-year contract, and it will allow us to provide services that are described in Charles' IEP to six students that are placed at this particular facility.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion? All right, Commissioner Tom Van Stone, is that a hand or are you just waving to me?
Both. Thank you through you, Mr. President. Yeah, just a couple of comments. I, I know I did a deep dive years ago. I forget who is in this position. And it was definitely hard to swallow, but there were definitely special ed students that were costing anywhere from 50 to $125,000 for us. So as big as those numbers are, they, they don't surprise me when you really break it down by student. But the only thing I'm wondering in that price, does it include transportation? Because some of these special students require, you know, either an ambulance or some sort of medical transportation as well. So is that included in this price or are we separately paying for the transportation?
Um, in the I can answer that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we separately pay for the transportation.
So these that are averaging 50 to 100,000, then it's plus the transportation. That's what I thought. So I thought I was told years ago. Which can be a big bill. So
Absolutely.
But it's, you know, what are we gonna do? We have to, you know, perform these services. I think the only thing I remember, Doreen, you might remember when I questioned it, was just on how the paperwork follows back into Waterbury because some of these students weren't even Waterbury residents. However, once they're, you know, once on paper, they, that we accept their disability and cost, it, it stays with us. You know, some of these kids, kids, students. I would love to know that as an aside, how many that are now still not even Waterbury residents, but the, the bill comes to us. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anybody else? Thank you very much, Miguel.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Nicely done. Our next agenda item is number uh, nine. Juan Mendoza, I believe you have the floor.
Uh, good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. I am requesting approval of a contract with Relay Graduate School of Education. As you know, Relay provides an alternate route certification for paraprofessional substitute teachers and other non-certified staff within our district. While in this year-long program, each candidate will work with their current role Monday through Thursday and attend classes with Relay on Friday. Under this contract, the district commits to release candidates for 3.5 hours each week to attend Relay classes. The district allows Relay candidates to observe and practice teach in the certification area with a mentor teacher at least three hours a week. Mentor teachers do earn a stipend for their work with these candidates. However, this stipend is paid by Relay. Waterbury Public Schools will contribute $1,000 to each candidate's tuition upon successful completion of the Relay program. If the Relay candidate is offered a job in Waterbury Public Schools, he or she must accept and commit to working for the Waterbury Public Schools for three years. After a rigorous application process and selection process, we currently have five Relay candidates for the 2021, 2022 school year, one long-term substitute seeking certification in secondary mathematics, which is an area which we have difficulty filling. Four paraprofessionals are seeking certification in elementary education. And 60% of our candidates identify as people of color. So three out of five, three of our five candidates are people of color. Please consider this agreement with Relay as growing our own talent is directly aligned to the Waterbury Public Schools strategic plan and our efforts to diversify our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have a question for Juan? Well, I don't see any, wait, Commissioner Liz Brown?
Juan, this is great news, and I think this is a great program. If we had more money, would there be more applicants? Is this, is money restricting us in any way?
No, I believe the program limits us to five. It's not, that's much the money.
Okay, because I know that
The partnership with Relay.
Okay, because I know they just passed legislation. I know Anne, Anne and I fought against this, but to, the Alliance Districts have to put 10% of new Alliance District money that would be allocated towards minority teacher hiring. So I didn't know if, if this would impact that at all.
Actually, we are using some money from a grant that we received from minority, it's a minority teacher grant that we received, and some of that money is going to be applied to, to help some of these candidates with their tuition.
Great, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Anybody else have a comment or question for Juan? Commissioner Harvey, is that your hand waving?
Yes, yes, it is. Just Juan, just a quick question. I think you may have answered it through Liz. That, how many, you answered that we have four candidates now that are
We have three out of five candidates.
Five candidates. How, how many did we have the previous year?
We had two candidates last year. However, both candidates, one pulled out right before the program started, and the other candidate was not able to finish the program through Relay.
Okay. And do we advertise this?
Yes, we do. We advertise that. We send it through all, all our staff because we want to, you know, grow our own pipeline. So we send it to our, our non-certified staff.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Juan. Wonderful job. Good questions. Our next agenda item is number 10, and I believe Louise Allen Brown, the floor is yours on this one.
Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, and Dr. Ruffin. This item before you is for a longstanding grant that Waterbury has held from the Connecticut State Department of Education. The grant serves students at three schools now, Duggan, Cross, and Sprague. All three of the school's principals have confirmed that they would very much like the programs to continue. The program is a small grant of $20,000 with a local match of $7,500, which Doreen Diolo has confirmed that we could provide once again if we awarded the grant for 2021 to 23. Local board approval is required for this application, and we're happy to answer questions if you have any. Elaine Skoronsky is also here on that grant.
Any questions, anyone?
No.
I don't see, oh, Commissioner Liz Brown?
I was trying to give other people a chance to ask questions, but this grant has been in operation for a long time in Connecticut. Do we know, what are the outcomes? What's happening because, because of these services in the school? I ask because this may be an opportunity through SRT2 funds with a focus on mental health and early intervention. If this program is really working, maybe it's something that we should consider expanding. So I, I, maybe you don't have the results now, but I think we'd be interested to seeing, is this an effective program that we may want to duplicate in our school system since we are looking for expansion of mental health services and SEL services and so forth. So I, I think the board would be interested in knowing, you know, it, how, how is it being, how is it effective?
The program has been proving to be highly effective in Waterbury and other locations. And with COVID in the past year, it may not be the best year for data collection, but I can surely ask through Elaine Skoronsky that we provide the board with some years before this past year of evidence of success for students. I can say that anecdotally, the principals and the parents all report that their students are benefited greatly by the program in terms of their being able to better acclimate to the school environment and to promote their, their student success. So we can get you some data from the Children's Institute, which does data collection for this program and you know, additionally, there are always parent, parent comments and feedback suggesting how valuable it is. And as I said, the principals, based on that kind of information, what their teachers are reporting that they see as success in the classroom are asking for it back.
Thank you, Louise. Thank you, Liz. Uh, anybody else question, comment? All right, I don't see anybody else's hands waving. Louise, I believe you have the next item, which is item number 11. And this one, there is a consensus needed, I believe.
Yes, there is. This multimedia school security grant is from a program similar to the Round 5 Security Grant that you looked at in your last workshop. This grant, however, allows us to seek funding from a different pool of money for a very specific purpose, which is to provide interoperable systems at the surface. I can tell you that that means surfaces that tie together immediate notifications for law enforcement in the school departments. Dan Berry and Will Zuda are on the call. They have actually identified the solution that they propose that we seek funding for through this opportunity. This, like the Round 5 grants, would be a state reimbursement grant where the state would pay 79.79% of the costs and the remaining 20.21% of costs would be a local match, which Doreen Diolo has already confirmed that district could provide if we were fortunate enough to be awarded a grant for this program. Um, Will, did you or, or didn't want to talk a little bit more about the proposal?
Yeah, definitely. This is a multimedia communication and notifications that we met with police chief last week, and the opportunity came along that we could apply for this. Allow the 31 schools to tie in, will be able to tie in to first responders, police, fire, all radio communications, camera feeds, panic buttons. We also will be writing soft camera buttons to all teachers. It'll be an application that'll be, they'll be able to run their phone in case there was an issue or something happens in the classroom and be able to push the button. And that would automatically instantly share all video and radio communication that's going on in the school within real time with the first responders. So they'll have situational awareness. They'll know what's going on. We'll overlay that with a map, so they'll know exactly where the, what part of the location of the building that they need to go to. So and it's, this, this includes a five-year plan, so it will be covered for five years. So pretty much, you know, it, it, it's really a great product. We saw it in action and the way it ties all these different communication devices out there and provides that instantaneous act of video and radio communication share with police. It's, it's a great product, and that's why we're asking for your approval tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Berry, did you want to add anything?
Oh, good evening. This, the fact, my assessment's going through the school so far is we don't have panic alarm capabilities within the school. Some schools have lockdown capabilities, but no school has the ability to directly connect with PD and Fire Department. And this, this solution would actually enhance your ability to do that in so many ways.
Okay, great. Thank you. You need a thumbs up, mate, Liz Brown?
Yeah, I just had a question in terms of, I'm envisioning, so every classroom would have a panic button?
It'll be a soft panic button. Okay, Carrie, you want to take it?
Yeah, the panic button would be what they, Will said is considered soft, Liz. So to actually be placed, so everyone would be an app in your phone. So that capability would be on the cell phone. So as we think about panic alarms and things are hardwired, this gives principals, VPs, teachers the ability to have that no matter where they are in the building. So if they should see a threat or some issue going on, they can act on it right away. And then that dispatch of help comes immediately.
Okay, because I, I was picturing these buttons all over the school that the kids were going to press all the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
That was good.
Uh, anybody else have a question for the group? Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
I had all kinds of things light up on the screen. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Yeah, I, I feel the same way, Liz, just to, you know, when we talk security stuff. And I just want to make a comment that in the past, we dealt with things like this in executive session. I ju, I just want to make sure we, you know, we, we are talking in public things we, we want public. There's security in buildings is absolutely a good criteria for an executive session. So I just want to make mention that in the future, we may want to hear this in executive session before we, we do it in open forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? All right, I believe I heard the word you need a thumbs up from the group. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Berry.
All right, here's my thumb. I think you got everybody's thumb.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next agenda item is item number 12. And I think Doreen Biola, you have the floor on this one and the next one. And so you can just do the two of them and have fun. I will be on the side over here. I'll be listening. My, my leg is bothering me.
Thank you, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Board Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. Before you tonight is a transfer of funds in the current fiscal year. I came before you last month with a transfer, and I said I would be back again. So here I am with another transfer. As you know, through COVID, through vacancies, we have a lot of line items that surplus. So we would like to take those line items that are in the salary lines as you see for, for teachers, for some school maintenance, some overtime, the paraprofessional line, AB therapist, school psychologist. as you see for, for teachers, for some school maintenance, some overtime, the paraprofessional line, A B therapists, school psychologists, and the deputy superintendent line. So the savings in those line items, I like to move down into, that would be a total of $2,478, and I like to put $1,300,000 into the consulting line. And I just need to explain that. That is for our E S S subs. We outsourced the subs beginning in January, but the budget was up in the subline. But I had already transferred money last month out of the subline that went into the sinking fund. But I'm going to use the overage, the savings that are in these line items to put into the consulting line because in order for me to report the outsourcing of subs, it has to be down into a purchase service line, which the consulting line is for reporting purposes. I can't leave an outsource up into the salary line. So that's the amount that we're paying E S S for half the year. And the remainder, I'd like to put $1,475,000 into the district-wide instructional materials. As you know, we entered into a contract, a five-year contract with Curriculum Associates for the iReady Math. We paid year one out of the funds that we have. And with the savings, I'd like to pay year two and five so we can get ahead of this because some of this funding gets split up between some of our SIG grants as well as the Alliance Grant. But I think with this savings, if we can pay years two and five and we have the licenses for those years and, and we can kind of get that off the books and we wouldn't have to budget into the SIG grant. And that could be used for, you know, more important things that may be, not that this is important, but more important things that maybe the SIG grant can cover for those individual schools. So does anybody have any questions concerning the transfer?
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I, I just found this rather interesting when I was looking at my backup information that, you know, in finance meetings, I was talking about too many vacant positions and some of these numbers line up exactly with the vacant position numbers in the budget. So I'm kind of curious now if we can look again at next year's budget. And this shouldn't be just money laying around in the budget. I'm going to bring it up again when we talk about the budget about vacant positions. But here we are, sliding the money out of vacant positions that was told to me for next year's budget is so important. And now we're just moving the money over to pay someone else. So it was the exact concern I had. So that's obviously not a question of comment. So I will be questioning more next year's budget again as we talk about it on vacant positions.
I would like to just bring up a point, Commissioner, that we, we do receive $158,375. We have a minimum budget requirement that if the city does not provide that $158,375, then we're in violation. So, I mean, these are positions that if we could fill, we would want them all filled. So these aren't positions that we would want to, you know, take away from our budget. And at the end, when we do surplus, I think we're finding ways that we're using it wisely and repurposing it to other areas and planning ahead. You know, again, as, as, as these S R funds come and then as quickly as they'll go, we want to, you know, make sure that we have money going into a sinking fund and protecting some of our investments that we've already entered into. Especially with, you know, the technology and, and any type of infrastructure and facilities in our capital budget, we're trying to put funds away to support any of that in the near future.
I, I'm not questioning at all validity or anything like that. I think it is very wise when you see the opportunity, you know, to do that. You know, maybe we could talk, you know, in Finance Committee or whatever, maybe having an area where we call out opportunity. And it's how we would do it in, you know, in the private sector. And you highlight opportunity and at least you know, going in, in that budget, there could be an opportunity to do exactly what you're doing. And, and I would like to see something like that as, you know, not questioning the move of the money at all and not, and even where it's going. I see exactly why we need to have that money go to those two line items. So not questioning anyone's, you know, ethics or anything like that. Just making note that this kind of proved my point about next year's vacant positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, questions, or? I don't see anybody else. Doreen, thank you. I think you have the next item.
I do. Thank you again. This is our budget reduction plan. This went before the Finance Committee on May 4th for discussion. As you know, the board transmitted the budget on February 18th to the city side with $162,275,000, knowing that we had to work towards a reduction of 3.9 million to get us to the $158,375 that would be approved by the mayor and the Board of Aldermen for the Department of Education. So I'm just going to run through the budget reduction plan. Our gross budget proposal that we had for fiscal year '22 was $193,781,027. We are offsetting that by the operating costs that are in the Alliance Grant for next year at $27,881. And with the contingency surpluses that we've been carrying over for the last few years of that total $3,625,000. That gets us to $162,275,000 that we did transmit over to the city. The Board of Aldermen is proposing the education budget at the $158,375, and that we have left us a difference of 3.9. The reductions to get us to the zero budget gap from the 3.9 with the surplus money that was approved at the last transfer last month was the health benefit contribution. We proposed an increase of $2 million into next year's budget. We provided that to the city with the transfer that we have already done, so we could take that off of the fiscal year '22 increase. Part of S R two, one of the usable, use of the funds is to retainment of some of our fiscal year '22 staff. So we are proposing to move the guidance counselors, the new positions that we had had, and their salary and benefits, a network manager and some operation staff of seven positions. And these are all existing positions that we already have in the budget, and this is just to retain them. And that totals $2,415,214. And again, the areas of guidance, the network and the operation and maintenance, as you know, is a big part of the use of funds for S R. There was also a correction for the grant specialist. There's 50% coverage is in the general fund. We were budgeting the full amount there because part of it is in another grant. So we just made that adjustment of the $25,000. But we did have some additions from when we proposed the book. As you know, we went out for an RFP for transportation. We received those back. We just approved the contracts. But there was an increase overall. We had budgeted a 3% increase when it totaled 6%. So there was an additional $540,239 to be added to the budget. And also at the time, our propane fuel bid went out, and there will be an increase next year of $29,656. So between those reductions and the few additions, it's getting us to the 3.9 reduction that now brings the budget gap to zero. Does anybody have any questions on the budget reductions?
Commissioner Rocco Orso, sorry, I muted myself.
No problem. Just a comment, being the chairman of the Finance Committee. I just wanted to thank Doreen for doing a great job as usual, and thank you for a good explanation this evening.
Yay, bravo. Thank you, Doreen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Karen Harvey, is your hand up? Okay.
Notice now.
I see waving. I just get my attention. Commissioner Liz Brown? You're muted. Liz, you got to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
No, we can't. Thank you.
Okay, I just had a question, Doreen, in terms of the use of the S R funds. Now, those are for positions, especially the guidance counselors. And I guess my concern is that after the S R funds go away, how will we be able to sustain those, those positions? And in the meantime, we're taking, you know, we have $2,478,000 that we're transferring up there. So I'm not sure why we're not using that money, the $2,478,000 for those positions so that they will be continued and not used by S R funds.
Yeah, well, at the time, Commissioner, when we had made the decision, we were kind of aware through the governor's proposed budget that there would not be an increase to the Alliance Grant, that it was going to be flat funded. The Appropriations Committee on the state level has since changed that. So these, yeah, that was great. So these, these guidance counselors really are part of the Alliance Grant. And we had moved them here because it, it falls under the criteria for the mental health, wellness, and all that. So that's the reason we moved them to the S R grant.
So hopefully, as we move forward, they will become permanent with the Alliance, within our ECS angle. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Doreen? Comments? Doreen, I think I speak for everyone here. Thank you for doing such a great job and have a sparkling evening.
Thank you.
Thanks. Our next agenda item is item number 14. Dr. Ruffin and Mr. Juan Mendoza.
Thank you, Commissioner Pagano and Commissioners. We were asked by the School Personnel Committee to bring this position to, to the full board for explanation about the project manager, specifically the new position of Education Building and Facilities Project Manager. And I would like Mr. Mendoza to give a description of the criteria and the specifications for this, this position.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Good evening. This position, Education Building and Facilities Project Manager, is needed to work closely and collaboratively with the Office of Accounting and Procurement, the School Business Office, and School Inspector's Office to ensure that the, the plan and executed work within their change meets all the requisites, rules, the guidelines, and the laws governing contracted work for the school district and for the city. This position would provide guidance and input on capital project budgets to the city and would be accountable for conducting plan reviews and inspections of facilities for compliance with construction, fire safety, and other applicable codes and regulations jointly with the school inspector. This person would be accountable for the overseeing of expenses, expenses and capital projects of all the school facilities and the water public schools, including the development and implementation of a long-range facility plan and capital projects. In addition, they would plan, create, and execute the development and implementation of an annual and long-range three- to five-year budget and planning for the Board of Education infrastructure assets. Tonight, we just wanted to briefly highlight three, three or four of the responsibilities and then discuss the educational qualifications. So this individual will work collaboratively with, with management, our contracted consultants, and our key stakeholders to plan for current and future academic program needs requiring infrastructure and asset investment and prioritization. They would also ensure that the projects are completed on forecasted budgets and that they report on risks to meeting the approved budget. They would review facility-related plans and specifications. They may conduct onsite inspection and feasibility studies for the location renovations and the conversion of our facilities. They would also create and collaborate a long-range facility plan with all the capital projects, with our central office administrators, school inspectors, building principals, architects, engineers, consultants, our city officials, as well as our state officials. In terms of educational qualifications, this person would have to have eight years of school building, facilities, construction management experience. They would also need a bachelor's degree in engineering, construction management, or building science. And lastly, they would have to have demonstrated experience in designing or managing HVAC, energy management, and building control systems which is very highly desirable for our abilities.
All right, any questions? The floor is open. Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Well, you know, I'm going to perk up when something says new position. Not to, not go along with how I always operate here. I don't know if we want to talk here or somewhere else about salary. But any new, oh, it is on there. I'm sorry, I do see it now. But I was looking more at the skills. We're asking a lot for this position, quite a bit. And I know we really won't know any significant changes to our infrastructure until we do the survey. So we probably cover a lot of everything, but it, it, it always just concerns me, you know, with new positions. I looked on the new org chart that we just received today, and I did not find a, a location on there for this position. I don't know if you were waiting, Dr. Ruffin, till a later approval, but I don't see it on the org chart. So is this being paid for out of our regular funds, which we just discussed with, with Doreen? Or is this something we're grant funding somewhere?
Well, I want to answer that on several different platforms. First of all, it's, it's a position that has always been missing in Waterbury Public Schools. We've never had someone with that level of skill to be able to do all of the work that was just described. And, and we, we probably suffered some serious consequences as a result of that. So the, when I knew and I shared with the entire board that Will Clark would be leaving, who's a CRO, former CRO with experience that far expands what in, you know, anyone in that position possessed before, you know, as an attorney, as someone who worked on, on union negotiations, as someone who came in with some experience as a COO in the previous district, and someone who has been in a district that expanded buildings and construction. I think that his skills at the time that he was here in Waterbury was very well felt across the system. However, since he has left, and before he left, I shared with the board the importance of having someone who could project manage because we were right at the cusp of major projects that if we did not have an intentionality on focusing, we could potentially not meet some serious timelines. At the time, the board agreed, you know, that you saw the need, and I spoke with you about the real need for that project management. In addition to that, the critical need that once we received S R two, that we needed someone who could manage major projects across the district. And that includes projects that even now we would benefit from, such as how to continue to do preventative maintenance, which we've not been good at, and, and to drive that work in prevention as well as in a long-range plan for projects that could be completed so that it could be public, so that people could see when we said we were dedicating money to certain projects in a certain year that we could deliver on the promise. And I see this project manager as that key person. And no, I did not add it to the organizational chart. I, I didn't, I didn't want to just assume that you would approve it. But I'm certainly hopeful that you will, and I will add it, just as I shared with you before. It will, the position will report to the COO. The COO will be responsible for the, the work that will be performed by the project manager. And the project manager will also work very closely with our, our current company that is working with the city as well as the district, Naresco.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. And I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to vote yes when this comes up. We need, we definitely need this. We're very lucky with Will. We're very lucky with Paul Godon before him to get through some significant projects. But then if, if we do look back, we had some issues. Reed School, Mr. Mendoza knows better than any of us, has this big crack in the front hallway that we never could get resolution on. And I was there before the doors opened. So I think it's a much-needed position. And I do agree that the chief officer was fortunate for us, carrying some of that weight. So, no, I think it's well needed. I absolutely do. Especially with the report when it comes out, and we're going to have to probably go into a lot of contract negotiations, et cetera, for work to be done. So, but no, I'm not questioning the position at all. I was just curious where, if it's coming from the general budget or if we're paying for it some other way. That's, that's really the only question I have. That's really the only question I have. But I absolutely approve the position.
Okay. And the exact budget line that it's coming from, I would ask Doreen to share on this. But what I could share with all of the commissioners is this is a position that we should never let go away. So it will eventually come out of general budget.
Yeah, it would currently be budgeted in the Esser funding.
That's fine. And again, I agree. This is a position that probably, at the end of the day, if we did a return on investment, the job probably pays for itself. So, no, I don't always hope, no. I do agree with some things in this one. I definitely agree. Just, I think, like I said, I think in the long run, it's going to pay for itself. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Commissioner Rocco Orso, do I see your hand up?
As soon as I can unmute. Yes, sir. As you said before, I was the purchasing director for the city for 25 years. And this position is definitely needed. I've been trying to fight for this position for a long time. And if you can remember back, we had consultants. And Tom, you're right, the qualifications are steep, but they're needed. Because, you know, you see in the past, you need people like this. And I'm glad the engineering degree is in there. I'm glad a lot of these qualifications are in there. If you remember in the past, we had a consultant that was costing us almost $60,000 a month. So like Tom said, this is going to pay for itself. You know, and we need a professional. We need, because all this money that's coming in and all these projects that's happening, I'm not sure the people here that can handle it. I mean, really, I mean, it's just too much work for them. Not that they're not intelligent, but it's just going to be too much work for them. And this position is definitely, definitely needed, and it would pay for itself.
Thank you, Commissioner Orso. Anybody else have a comment or a question? Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I had questions regarding this position. I very well know the ins and outs of project management. And I was just questioning, one, who does this person report to? Is it to the superintendent? Or is it the school inspector? Who does the school inspector?
Excuse me, Commissioner, it's going to report to the chief operating officer.
The chief operating, okay. Because I was listening to the Personnel Committee meeting, and I thought, you know, it was that it would report to the school inspector. I also thought that there was going to be, that you were going to talk about the school inspector at some point.
Not on this agenda item. I can certainly speak to that.
No, not on this agenda item.
And it's not one and the same, and the school inspector was a job revision.
Okay, so I thought that at the meeting that at some point you would just brief us on that school inspector because that's kind of where I'm getting at, that this is, a school inspector was a civil service position. So I thought that that was going to take place. Maybe I heard incorrectly, but you did talk about school inspector. So anyway, I'll bring that up later. This project manager, Dr. Ruffin, you also mentioned that there are a lot of projects that, you know, this position was justified. And I thank you, Rocco, for that input. When we wind down on some of these projects, what does this project manager do? What sorts of things will this project manager be doing?
Oh, I don't foresee us winding down on the projects because in a district with 33 buildings, there will always be projects. If we had a project manager, that person would have been intimately involved with all of the elevators that we installed, all of the roofing that we've done, all of the problems that we continue to have with HVAC, all of the old boiler issues, all of the issues that we have with infrastructure, the ventilation issues. So I do not believe that this position, I think this position is long overdue. And so I don't foresee this position ever being exhaustive in the services that it could provide to a district our size.
Okay. And who evaluates this position? Who's responsible for that?
Typically, the people who evaluate are the people that they report to. So if the person reports to the COO, then the COO will evaluate the people under the organizational chart that you have a copy of. That person would be evaluated by the person that they report to, just like everybody else.
All right. Well, I have issues with that organizational chart. But this is not what we're talking about at this point. So President McDonald, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a comment or a question? Oh, seeing none, then I take it that we're done with this line item. Thank you very much. We are on item number 15, Superintendent's Update. Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner. My report's going to be very short tonight. And so the 2122 school year, as I've shared with the commissioner, we are opening it full in person. Keeping in mind that Waterbury Public Schools did not close at all this year. You know, there were times when we went virtual. But we were in full bloom this year with approximately 50% of the students that are reporting in person. But we operated with a full school year with our students meeting Monday through Friday. And then eventually, for the full day, Monday through Friday, we still use the Wednesday currently as a professional learning opportunity for our teachers and our staff. Next school year, we will open in full, in person. My staff and I are working on what that plan will look like so that we could place it on the template that has recently been sent to us by the state and will share it with everyone so that it could also be posted on our website. The plan is essentially the very same plan that we presented to the board at the beginning of the 2021 school year for if we were going to open in full person. So it's not a reinventing of a plan. It's that plan with some safety protocols that will be embedded because we want to continue the safety protocols throughout the 2122 school year, recognizing that certain elements may change as time goes on. For instance, the social distancing, while it may still be observed, is certainly not going to be six feet or three feet any longer when we open in 2122. So our plan for opening is that, full in person. And you will be receiving an update from me in writing as well as sharing it with the public, what the school day would look like should we have a professional learning day that will allow our teachers and staff to continue to learn as we will continue with the one-to-one technology implementation. Another component of our 2122 school year will be a virtual academy that is under construction. And I say "under construction" because we have a team of very enthusiastic thinkers in the district and innovators that are working on the components of what a virtual academy will look like. But it will look nothing like it looked this year. For example, it's not going to be for people to sign up to attend should they choose not to come in person. That's not going to be what we will utilize a virtual academy for. We will use it to enhance educational opportunities for students. And the team is working on what that could look like as they provide some design and creativity to what that plan will be for our students for next year. While it is not anywhere near completion today, you could expect that when we do have a virtual academy, it will be an application process. And some criteria will be set whereby someone can apply to attend virtual academy. And then who, of course, will be teaching in the virtual academy. So I don't anticipate having that ready for you this week at all. But I am very confident that the team who's working on that will have a quality product to be presented to you. It is very possible that in the design of the virtual academy, that it does not get implemented in August or September. It is very possible that it could begin implementation in October or November. That's why it's critically important that everyone understands that our opening for the school year will be in person for teachers and students and staff. And we're ready and welcome to have our students and our staff returned for in-person. I do not believe that our school year at all will be just a traditional school year. I think we've learned a lot through this pandemic. And so the design of the lesson, as well as what we would expect for our teaching and learning, is going to continue to improve and develop over time. And so I look forward to continuing that work with the staff who's been working very hard to redesign what the summer is going to look like. And, you know, we will have several summer programming, the accelerated learning programs that will go for our students that may need some additional work during the summer. And we also have some plans for acceleration. That is, you know, what do we enhance student learning when our students already know the information? So certainly, we shouldn't keep everyone in an intervention or a remedial style of learning because that's just not accurate to say that everyone needs intervention. We will also have a STEM camp this summer where our students are going to be very well immersed in science and mathematics and technology. We will also have more summer camps that we're working through with several community partners, including Parks and Recreation, the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and other agencies that are working, as well as our staff, who will be providing some summer camps and summer workshops for our students in various content areas, including fine arts and higher-level mathematics, as well as science, as well as visual arts. So we're excited about that, visual and performing arts as well. And we have 21st Century, which will be taking a huge part of our students in engaging them in summer camps and summer activities. And we're looking forward to all of that. We've actually hired two people who will be working and have been working for the last two or three weeks in coordinating this between Waterbury Public Schools and the various agencies that I just mentioned, and coordinating it in such a way that our students and our families know that these exist at no cost to students in Waterbury. And we've also utilized that as an opportunity for the teachers and the staff who will be working in our summer programs to have an opportunity to also bring their children to some of those summer camps at no cost to them should they reside outside of the district, but they choose to work in Waterbury during the summer. Additionally, we are looking at opportunities to hire students ages 14 on up to work in various summer programs. And whether that's through PAL or through any of the other partners that we have and through Waterbury Public Schools, I think we're going to see more of our students working and getting paid this summer. And some of that, of course, will be funded through the Esser funding that we have received. That's my very brief update on the 2122 school year, which includes the summer and the school year for 2122. And with the creation of the virtual academy, which will look very different than what we had this year. I'll stop there in case you have questions only about that item.
Any questions, anyone? Commissioner Liz Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. It's very exciting, all the planning that's going on. I just had a question. In terms of, I think we're supposed to have summer school for elementary students who are behind in reading. I think we're required to do something there. So are we still going to have that program? Or are they going to be incorporated into the larger programs?
No, we're going to have programs that will address our kindergarten through, I think it's third grade. We're still going to have that. It will look different because, you know, not everybody needs to go back to the very beginning of the school year. By no means our children failed to learn at all this year. They have learned. We need to know exactly what it is they need to specifically focus on so that they could continue to grow and to learn during the summer. So we'll still have that summer programming. We're going to have programs for our middle school students and for our high school students, as well as other summer enrichment programs.
Great. And one other focus, I guess, you know, we, at the last workshop, we looked at the number of children, I think it was 4,000 or so, who are considered chronically absent. And of course, that figure is very disturbing. So I was just wondering if you had a specific plan of outreach for those students and what the summer might look for them if they were, I don't know, I don't know, something magical to help them really get back on track. So, or are they just part of the general summer school?
Okay, so now I'm going to confuse everybody because I'm going to talk about all of those things that confuses everyone, including us at times because of the complexity of where we're headed. And so it involves not only the Esser II money, which is $41 million plus, and not only the ARP Esser money, which is over $89 million, but I'm going to talk about some additional funding, some funding that we've previously received, which is why sometimes you see things moving from one item to the other. But importantly, there are other grants and opportunities, either through the Governor's Program or through the LEAPs Program, that we have had additional funding sources that are to be applied to specific areas. And then Mr. Schwartz can chime in at some point if he'd like to. We're working on a LEAP grant that is going to serve to hire a coordinator and maybe three or four other people that will engage our families, go to the homes, beyond just calling and beyond just a home visit, but no one's there. But that particular grant focuses on making a connection with the family. And so I think that one way to evaluate a return on investment for that particular grant would be to say, well, so how many families have you connected with and brought back and made certain that they attended and make certain that they were engaged and they had all of the tools that they needed? Because that's a direct reflection on what this person or that creation of this program will be able to evaluate itself for effectiveness. So beyond what Parent Laysons do, beyond what we do in a regular school year and a regular school day and in the summer, the LEAP grant affords us additional staff. We are not the ones that will be the executors of that. We're the recipients of the funding. But we don't execute the program. The program is executed through ACES. And so they will be able to hire someone that is Waterbury. And we can select our model, which we have. And they work with our children in our communities, but their purpose is to connect families and children who've perhaps been disconnected during this time in a way that we can really capture everybody back. So they will be working on that. So that's an additional pocket of resources and money that has been awarded, that works towards responding to that question that you just asked.
Wow, that's exciting. Now, that's the LEAP program, that LEAP?
LEAP.
LEAP. And an outside organization is going to be the fiduciary and coordinate that effort?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a contact person in the school that will be working with them?
Yes, that hasn't been identified yet. But yes, that will be someone from the district who will be working with that entity to be able to do that work I just described.
That's very exciting. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, did you have anything you want to add about that?
Yeah, it's the Governor Lamont announced this. It's the Learner Engagement and Attendance Program, LEAP. 15 districts receive this funding. Waterbury is receiving this funding through the RESC, as Dr. Ruffin mentioned, over $1 million to reengage families up until December 2023. And we'll be going out in teams of three to students who are disengaged to be able to reengage the family, connect them to the services here in Waterbury based on those conversations they're having with the community in their space, not necessarily at the school, but going out and canvassing the community based on the students who are disengaged. So excited to start that up. But the conversations have just started with our RESC and will continue and will start this summer.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Ruffin, the floor is back on your lap.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I have the American Rescue Plan, which is the ARP Esser. That's, it's a long title. I'm going to say it because every, we have so many acronyms. The American Rescue Plan, which is called for short ARP, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, which is Esser. I'm going to give you an update on where we are here. So we have submitted the Esser II Plan, which is the $41 million, knowing very well that when that was submitted, that it was not final. knowing very well that when that was submitted, that it was not final. Because we knew that we were going to be getting the ARP Esser. And we also anticipated receiving additional funds and additional resources. Plus, we also know that we have additional funds allocated to our district. And so with full intention, when we provided the ARP, I'm sorry, the Esser 2, and we sent that to the State Department, we knew that we were going to revise that plan and we will probably revise it multiple times. But we addressed every single component of that grant in an acceptable fashion. And we reserved in that particular Esser Plan a substantial amount for capital improvements. And keeping in mind that within capital improvement, that also resides not only the infrastructure for technology, but also some technology pieces as well. We want to continue to do the one-to-one. That's very costly. When we received the allocations for ARP Esser, that's the 89-plus million, we also know that there are guidelines that are coming out from the State Department and from the Federal Department as well. And while they are still working on guidance, we have some guidance that will help us to be able to work with our district and take the feedback that we've received through many community forums, from parents and students and teachers and community partners and, you know, our board members and everyone that will help us to draft what that could look like, but it's not due till August. As a precursor to that plan comes our 21-22 school year opening schools plan. So that opening schools for the next school year is an attachment to what the ARP Esser 2 is going to be. And we are going to take all of the feedback that we've received through a number of community forums and thought exchanges. And we're going to do a preliminary draft when it's time, and it's not time now, to make certain that the plan gets reviewed by the board and others before we do any kind of submission in August. And so while it's not a very long period of time, but what's important to us is that we get it right and that the $135-plus millions of dollars that we were receiving will give us a return on our investment. And so we are going to be strategic about it. That's why the strategic plan is so critical to moving the board. You know, we had a lot of input on what goes on in the strategic plan. I would say to all of us that the strategic plan grew from maybe a four- or five-year plan to maybe 10-, 15-, or 20-year plan. We do have some time constraints on ARP Esser and Esser 2. Esser 2 has to be spent by September of 2023. And then the ARP Esser by September, Doreen, correct me if it's September of 2024?
Yep, that's correct.
And so that's not a long time. But so we have to be real intentional about what we do with this. Because if we hire a lot of people, like, you know, we've heard that, you know, we need more of a lot of different things. We also know that we need to have a sustainability model attached to it. So if we hire something and it's working and it's doing its job and we're getting a great return on our investment, importantly, we want to know how are we going to be able to sustain that over time? And we know for a fact that we cannot sustain $135 million after 2024. We can't do that. So we're going to take the time that we need and take the feedback that we've received and the feedback that we're going to receive to develop an ARP Esser Plan that will also require some additions and some edits to the Esser 2 Plan, so that we can deliver a full product and be able to start executing that. The Esser funds are available for us to spend. So we've started based on plan, but it has been at a very minimum. You know, summer programs, for example. That's an example. But for the $89 million, there has been nothing done on that until we can devise our plan, and we will do that in full collaboration with, of course, my team and taking full account for all of the feedback that we've received over the last several months. I'll stop there in case you have questions.
Any questions for Dr. Ruffin or comments? All right. Dr. Ruffin, back to you.
And then I will give you the latest on the International School. We have conducted the lottery for the International School with our pre-K and kindergarten and first graders. We are finalizing the acceptance letters from the parents of students who will be attending. We're working on staffing the school with our teachers, who require special certifications, and we're excited about that. There are some upgrades to the building that I can't wait for us to take a tour so you could see what it's looking like. And as soon as we have our, like, a model classroom, you know, with furniture and everything, I would love for the board to take a walk through the school so you can see where the beginning of this international school is going to be housed and the preparations that have gone ahead in advance. We also are excited about getting the parents to visit the school. We've had some collaboration meetings with others who have been successful at a dual-language school and language immersion. And we're crafting and drafting what professional learning is going to look like for all of our teachers and all of our staff that will work and all of the activities that will be a part of family and community engagement. We've also charged the school with determining what their start and end times are going to be and really examining some models that we would want to consider. And for this year, we do anticipate that our pre-K students are going to be transported to the school. So we're very excited about that.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Ruffin on this? Commissioner Tom Van Stone and then Commissioner Rocco Orso.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, for you. I'm excited for this school. I really am. Too bad we couldn't have brought in everyone to apply, right? Because you had a lot of applicants, I believe, the last time he told us. I'm really excited. I think this is an excellent idea. I think the children that do attend it will get enhanced education that they never would have gotten in a regular classroom. So this has a double thumbs up for me, and I really can't wait. Hopefully, I get to visit if some of the regulations get dropped down. But I'm truly, truly happy for this and looking forward to it. So nice job on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Rocco Orso, thank you, Commissioner Van Stone.
A couple of things. I have to admit, I sort of had my doubts at the beginning when Dr. Ruffin did present this. But I'm very happy, like Tom said, I'm very happy that it's going to go through. And I'm excited, and I can't wait to see the school. And in another matter, I know I'm not supposed to bring this up now, but I'd like to thank Dr. Ruffin and her staff for having all the seniors be able to have a prom this year. You did a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I see everybody clapping their hands there. Thank you, Commissioner Rocco Orso. I see Commissioner Charles L. Stango's hand up.
Thank you. Doctor, just a couple of quick questions. You may have said it, and I may have missed it, because there was a lot of stuff coming out. How many students do you anticipate in the International School?
We initially started off with about 112 that we thought we could accept. We'll be accepting a few more than that. And so I would say probably close to 120, 130 students in the pre-K and first grade. We did have over 500 qualified students that applied. But because we did not have equal numbers of students that were English speakers and matching equal numbers of students that were Spanish speakers, that did put a limit to how many students we could accept on, you know, this year. But, you know, it's a new concept for Waterbury. I know that someone said they thought that there was such a program in the past. It wasn't this program. Waterbury did not have this kind of program. And so having said that, you know, we're going to continue to do a great job on marketing and explaining what this is and what it's not. And who knows, maybe after our facility studies, we do find some ways to expand it. But for right now, that's all we could expand at this point, knowing that the building has a capacity that will probably be over capacity if we don't have a plan moving forward. Plan on moving it to eighth grade.
Thank you. And another question I have. When you talked about a lottery for those students, did you have separate lotteries for Spanish-speaking only and for English-speaking only and for dual-language? Kids who spoke both languages already? Or is just one lottery wherever it fell, it fell?
It was a lottery, and it was complex, because it was a weighted lottery. And I'm going to ask Will Zuda to explain. But we also did a lottery with a special weight for the students that resided in the community. Remember, I promised the board that a large number of the students that lived in the community would have priority to attend the school. So we took that into consideration as well. Will, you may want to describe a little bit about the weights.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. Yeah, so the way it worked was exactly how Dr. explained it. There was a lottery that ran for each grade level. And then it ran for, within each grade level, it ran for Spanish-speaking kids and then the English-speaking kids. And then they were ranked from that lottery spin. And they were all given a rank, and then we took the top. So the way it worked was we looked at the list, and if there was a sibling match, we looked at those kids individually. And if they were in the top, in the top list of the top 20 kids that were getting in for, say, the English class, we would look at those kids first, and if they had a sibling, we would flag the sibling and bring the sibling in for the higher grades. So we started at the pre-K level and we worked our way up. So and then we also looked at neighborhoods. So you got to wait for neighborhood, you got to wait for a sibling. But each grade level and each group was run separately.
Okay, thank you. And just my final question, Doctor. You mentioned also in your presentation that your pre-K kids will receive transportation. How about the rest of the student body? Is it because they're predominantly, you think, neighborhood children, and that they would be walkers?
No, Commissioner, all of the children received transportation, but it's not typical that we provide transportation for pre-K. And pre-K will be provided transportation to the International School.
Right, I get it.
All of them will be provided transportation if they need it.
All righty. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango. Commissioner Amanda Nardozzi, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question. You had mentioned in the past, when we were discussing the school, about having other languages. Were there any other applicants who had other languages besides English and Spanish? And were any of those students chosen?
Yes, we did have students that spoke other languages. But this year, the two languages that will be taught within the school are English and Spanish. But there were students who applied, who spoke another language other than English and Spanish, that were not able to get into the school this year. Primarily, our issue is with staffing and to be able to staff and to sustain staffing with multiple-language teachers, which are very challenging to come by.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Commissioner Liz Brown?
Yeah, I had a thought, not particular to this school, but if I may. We had talked at one meeting about expanding Maloney Schools for one grade. Are we still thinking about doing that, or is that on hold?
We did not expand it. It needs to be. But we did not make any, you know, we didn't move forward with it because beyond the sixth grade and prior to, of course, the facility study, we didn't know how far we could sustain it. I still believe, and I still recommend to the board, that we look aggressively at what we are going to do with our current magnet schools and expansions for them, because there is a very strong desire from our parents and our students to remain in those magnet schools. And that would include, you know, all of the specialized schools that we have. And so when we do the facility study, and of course, if that continues to be the desire of the board, I think we need to say that so that we know where and how we might be able to expand in the future.
No, I personally have always loved the idea of expansion. But anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Liz Brown. Anyone else got a comment or question? Dr. Ruffin, thank you very much.
Commissioner, I just want to make one final comment, if you don't mind, please, because I think this is our last meeting before our graduations. And I know Commissioner Orso mentioned something about prom. Our seniors actually have a fun day tomorrow that is specifically for the seniors. The high school principals worked very hard with their staff to provide this for the seniors before we even knew that we could or could not have prom. In addition to that, the number of programs for our honors programs, I've attended four thus far. The students are just receiving these top honors, and I'm so very proud of all of the students. And I have another ceremony to attend on Monday. In addition to that, our students are going to have a prom, our seniors are. And I'm very grateful to the people on this team. I know Will Zuda worked very hard with our health department, along with Sujatha Wykoff, along with, you know, the assistant superintendents, and worked very hard with our health department, as well as the crisis manager, to bring in ICAT, which was, you know, it literally occurred instantly that we were made, we were awarded this. We were one of two districts in the state of Connecticut that was awarded this partnership with Rite Aid that could provide testing in the school site for our students. And we immediately developed a plan, but we did it with all the protocols in place and all the guidance that we received. It cost nothing to us. And we were able to get our seniors tested. And then we moved it to the ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. And then we're going to use it throughout the summer to test our students for summer schools and summer camps. And so I want to thank my team for working really hard on that, which allowed our students to have a prom on the 11th. It's going to be an evening event, and we're very pleased to be able to do that. And I want to thank the schools for making that happen really quickly and for allowing our students to have a wonderful opportunity to celebrate and to be kids again. Our graduations, of course, are going to be on the 14th, 15th, and 16th, and it will not rain. We have to have a wonderful graduation and celebrate these seniors, who are very much deserving. And of course, we continue to celebrate our elementary, middle students and our high school students that are not seniors in sometimes untraditional ways to recognize their promotion, to recognize their achievements. I've had a wonderful time visiting all of our schools to award the Superintendent's Student Recognition Award. And I will tell you, there are some stories that would touch your heart. The parents were there, the children were there, some of the children were surprised. The schools did a very elaborate job of recognizing their students. And so if you ride around communities in Waterbury and you see a sign in the yard for the students, there are 30, there are probably close to 40 signs of students that were recognized for the Students Superintendent's Recognition Award. We had a wonderful bus driver, Kathleen, who took us around. And some members of my senior cabinet came with me. And we really had a great time at all of the schools. I want to thank the principals and the parents and the students for making that happen. And Kathleen for driving us and giving us a personal tour of Waterbury. I learned a lot about Waterbury during that tour. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, you have your hand up?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, I know Vice President Harvey and myself were present Tuesday night at the Willby Award Ceremony. And some of those young folks were, the awards they won, it was mind-boggling. They're a valedictorian. I think we needed to call for U-Haul to get all of her awards home for her. It was a great night, very nice celebration. He was a young man from the ROTC, came over and talked to us after the ceremony. Were very helpful to us that night. Very impressed, very happy that Willby is... Very impressed, very happy that Willby is, has some things to celebrate, that was a great night, so thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Well, thank you, Dr. Ruffin, for the updates and I think you're all done with that one. We have Agenda Item sixteen and seventeen, Committee on Building a School Facilities, who was actually doing that one? There is no name associated with it.
I'll take care, take care of those.
Alright, sir, thank you.
You're welcome, good evening, Mr. President Pogano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioner Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. With the approval of the Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, the Superintendent of Schools has recommended the approval of use of facilities by the groups and organizations. So we have the Brooklyn Neighborhood Association and the Greater Y MCA by Jim Ror. The Brooklyn Neighborhood Association is requesting the courtyard on August fifteenth from nine-thirty AM to two PM. For nineteen fifty-five floor, floor, that's just a flood exhibition ceremony, so, and the. Greater Waterbury Y MCA is asking for permission for September twenty-twenty-one to June twenty-two, twenty-two. For the F school program that starts and ends at the end of the school day until six PM for Chase Gilmore and Generali Chase. But Chase is under twice, so Chase Gilmore and Generali.
Thank you, Mr. Zuda, any questions, comments, discussion? Alright, no one's got anything, we'll move on, Will, are you done with both?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, sir, you're very efficient. Dr. Ruffin, Agenda Item eighteen is your notification to the board, did you want to add anything?
Um, not anything to what you see in the board agenda. But, but I did want to put in a plug for a partnership with the United Way. And ask Mr. Schwartz if he doesn't mind posting it or putting it on, on, on the website. It's an endeavor that Mr. Schwartz and the United Way has started to assist our students. Who, if they do need some assistance with attending prom, that the, there's going to be an opportunity for people. To really support the students and, and, and their families during that time. And so if Mr. Schwartz would like to post that or, or send it to you or provide email to please get it out to all of your. Stakeholders and we can celebrate our students and make certain that, that we, we celebrate them in a grand way. And to thank United Way for their support of our students, thank you.
Great, thank you. Are we doing an executive session tonight? We are?
Not, not executive.
Oh, we're not doing executive, we're doing a special meeting.
Yes.
Alright, so we're not doing an executive session. So. Then I guess we're at the point where we're gonna adjourn this meeting, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Would anyone like to discuss this? All in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it, we are now gonna be going into special meeting. And do you got to do any magic?
No.
No, now you have to call the.
Well, this original meeting is adjourned. And we are now moving on to a special meeting that I'm calling to order. On this third day of June at seven forty-two PM, we're doing this virtual meeting via Zoom. This meeting is commenced and we will start off with a silent prayer is item number one, thank you. Juanita Hernandez, would you like to do the pledge of allegiance for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you, darling.
You're welcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
You are so welcome, President.
We are gonna do a roll call tonight, Carrie, thank you, names, please start.
Commissioner Brown? Here. Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Here.
Commissioner Orso? Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
I'm here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Van Stone?
President.
President Pogano?
Present. And Commissioner Orso was here, he did, he did signify that.
Yes, I had an important call, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Agenda Item number four, Committee on School Personnel, Commissioner Charles Stango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, item number four point one. With the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specifications for. And the new position of Education Building and Facilities Project Manager.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango, Commissioner Sweeney, anyone have any discussion or, or? Questions before we go forward with this vote? If you're in agreement with this, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the ayes have it, the motion carries, thank you very much, Commissioner Charles Stango.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second, thank you, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Closed, abstained. Everyone, we are done for the night, thank you very much.
Happy birthday to everyone's.
Zuda, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
There's a myth out there that people struggling with their drug problem have to hit rock bottom before they can get help. But that's not true, recovery can begin at any time and the earlier you can get treatment, the better. The longer a drug problem continues, the harder it is to treat. To get help early rather than holding out for a low point, come see me. I'm Officer Corino Meyer of the Waterbury Police Department and I'm here to help you, thank you.